I will call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, July 26, 2023. And may I please have a roll call?
Chair Lowe.
Here.
Vice Chair Quilty, absent. Commissioner Andre, absent. Commissioner DeBolt.
I'm here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Sol Focanik.
Here.
And Commissioner Zellmer.
Here.
Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united one. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oral communications, at this time, any individual in the audience may address the Planning Commission and speak on any item within its subject juris- subject matter jurisdiction of the Commission. Please state if you'd wish to speak on an item on the agenda. Remarks are to be limited to no more than five minutes. Would anybody like to speak at this time?
Bruce Murphy.
Okay. No problem. Yep, perfect. So we'll close oral communications and go to the consent calendar. We have one item on the consent calendar, which is the approval of the amendments of the regular meeting on June 28th.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gross and a second by Commissioner DeBolt. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Abstain.
Commissioner Sol Focanik abstains. So we have public hearing, item number A, 6A, which is a site development permit. Site development permit 23-01. And I'd like to have, I mean, if we could have a staff report by Mr. Oliver.
Excuse me a minute, but Chair Lowe, I live within 500 feet of the project, so I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you.
All right. Chair Lowe and members of the Planning Commission, site development permit 2301 is a consideration of a site development permit application to construct a 4,664-square-foot, three-story, four-unit residential project on a vacant parcel at 10912 Walnut Street. The applicant is Siraj Aboulsen, and the reason why he's not here tonight is because he would like to redesign the project to fit our code better. And so he wasn't able to meet the cutoff to do that. The public hearing of this notice was mailed out on July 12, 2023, to property owners and tenants within 500 feet and was noticed in the newspaper. So we do need to open it up for public comment tonight. This item, if possible, could be continued by Planning Commissioners to the August 23 meeting to provide the applicant time to make those changes. And staff recommends that the chair open the public hearing, receive public comments, and continue the item to the August 23 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And this is a public hearing at this time. If you'd like to speak on this item, please come forward, and if you could sign in for us, that'd be great. Thanks.
There's no sign-in sheet.
Oh, no sign-in sheet. Don't sign in.
You sign in.
I filled out a form.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Chairman Lowe and fellow board members or commissioners. My name is Bruce Murphy. I live at 10951 Walnut Street, next to Jiffy Lou, across the street from the project that this is about. My main concern with this is parking. It's already non-existent on our street. We have a lot of four units. I don't think we have any more than four per unit on our street. But I know that one of these has four families, and between them, they have 11 cars. Now, they do have two double parking garages and four parking spaces, but they don't use their garage to park in, they use it for storage. And so that leaves seven cars are parking on the street. And this is an extreme case, but it's not that different from most of the up and down the street. But adding four more units, I don't know how many, at least four cars, but more than likely eight cars. There's just nowhere to park, as well as the jujitsu there in the corner. Those people, when they come, they don't park in the back of that shop, they park on the street. So we just have no parking. And unfortunately, I don't have a solution for this. I wish I did. I just wanted to make sure, when he reworks his pro- this project, that he is aware that parking is the biggest issue he's going to have, at least the families are going to have on that street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this item? I will close the public hearing at this time and bring it back to the Commission. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to continue to the August 23 meeting.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to discussion item, or seven, discussion item, discussion item A.
And maybe we can have a little update from staff on this?
Great.
Yeah, good evening, Chair members of the Commission. Happy to recap what we discussed at our last meeting and then bring forward what was requested of our meeting this evening. So as a refresher, this was the discussion on the noise ordinance as it relates to contractual and homeowner-type of work, specifically on weekends. And so within our code, we have strict restrictions that prohibit certain type of contractual work, homeowner-type of work, around different hours per the code, and then on Sundays and federal holidays. So tonight, we're revisiting what was discussed in the last meeting with the request to bring forward a few things. As part of the report, I'm going to go over the standard operating procedures of our Code Enforcement Division team and ultimately how they address each scenario. There was also a request to bring in our friendly device here that detects the decibel readings. So I will do my best code enforcement impression and detect the sound tonight. And in addition, there was also a request to go over the six-month review of the different types of reports. So the chart there that's on the screen, I will reflect that, but I will summarize that because I understand there's a lot of tiny font on the screen. But basically, I'll go over that as well. So I'll start over, I'll start on the standard operating procedures. And in your report, it details, I won't go verbatim, but basically, our Code Enforcement Division has seven-day coverage. They work all seven days of the week, and as it relates to anything with noise ordinance, noise nuisance, they're pretty reactive. They're not necessarily going out trying to find culprits and trying to find activity. A lot of the response is reactionary, and then what they do is they make determinations based on the code. So for example, if someone is doing yard work on a Sunday, and it's being reported by a neighbor or anonymously, they'll go out, identify, make a determination based on what they observe. And the biggest goal is to gain compliance of our Code Enforcement Division. It's not to issue a citation, it's not to create any sort of intimidation, it's really just to educate and to gain compliance. And so as the report indicates, it's responsive, they go out, make a determination. Ultimately, a lot of the complaints that are going to be reported to our Code Enforcement Division team, it's going to be exterior type of noise. It's very rarely that we get reports about indoor, such as parties or things that are causing obstruction. A lot of it is exterior. So as I mentioned, it's a proactive approach to seek enforcement, I'm sorry, reactive approach to seek enforcement, and it's as a result of someone reporting an issue. As a result of noise complaints, the secondary violation is always the intent, right? It's not necessarily to identify what the work is, is it creating a noise nuisance? That's ultimately what really drives that visit. One of the goals initially is to gain in-person contact. So in other words, they don't just drop a slip at the door, they don't issue a notice of violation, they try to knock on the door, make contact, introduce themselves, explain what the situation is, whether it be anonymously that it was reported or by someone directly, they're trying to gain compliance through that. And so again, this is in the report. Of course, then there's progressive discipline, and as the chart shows, it's typically a verbal warning first, right? In other words, it's a, excuse me, sir, madam, we've been issued a report about this type of, you know, noise, and then if they catch them in the act, then they issue the notice. They'll typically issue what's called the Notice of Violation, which is a formal letter explaining what the details are. By that point, they have reached compliance. And it's been reported for the last six months that among the 21 related cases to noise, about 11 of them were related to homeowners, and only a fraction of those were related to contractual-type work. So in other words, people hiring a contractor to come out, and whether they were doing the work before hours or on a Sunday, that is how they address that issue. And so those stats are actually part of the report, under the summarized reports dating back six months. And I can sort of recap what I just presented, but basically, in that span of six months, they identified 21 cases related to noise complaints, as I mentioned. About six of them are specifically related to noise nuisance conditions. Fifteen are associated with construction noise on Sundays, however, only a fraction of those were homeowner, because remember, we also have commercial-type contractual work. And that's where the red flag is, is when they actually see that. But ultimately, only four of them were homeowner-related, and it's the first four that you see on that chart that created that noise nuisance. So ultimately, fortunately, none of those have resulted in a citation where the person was fined in that six-month span. And so that pretty much covers the report itself on standard operating procedures, the six-month review. I'd be happy to show what the decibel device does. But basically, our Code Enforcement team will use this device whenever they have to respond to something. They don't carry it on them at all times unless they're being prompted to go out and make that determination. And so this device here, I can present if you'd like, but you basically, I'll get up for this.
Typically, just blank screen, right? And so from my understanding is, they have to collect ambient noise first, so they're not just going to write up to the property line and try to catch. They're going to have to identify an ambient noise, so they press it on. From that point forward, to uphold it, then they'll start over, and that's when they'll progress to record the decibel reading. So our Department of Secretary typing might register at 37, but with talking, as Commissioner Zellmer has indicated, it'll elevate. But it's also determining whether or not it's collecting more noise based on the type of work that's happening, activity level, frequency. And so this is a device that is not necessarily going to be manipulated per se, there's a lot of discretion. And so our Code Enforcement Division team will use discretion when collecting the sound level. But to Commissioner Zellmer's point, yes, it's going to register at a high level based on conversation, traffic, activity. It could be kids playing in the front yard, and it's going to register at a high level. Of course, the same if it's contractual-related work, such as jackhammering, motor equipment, someone working on their vehicle, all of that is going to dictate the noise level. But ultimately, it's the discretion of our Code Enforcement Division that will determine, to what extent are they going to respond? And again, as I mentioned, and as the report shows, it's not necessarily they go out and catch people in the act. A lot of that is going to be based on reports that are coming through.
So that pretty much wraps up the report. I'd be happy to field any questions or any comments, or if there's any sort of vagueness to the chart or the report itself, I'd be happy to answer that.
Thank you. We'll start to my left here.
All right, I got a couple of questions about the report. I see the last column over there, it says requesting party type, some say anonymous, other one says code officer. Can you explain the difference between those two?
Sure. So Tom, if you don't mind, just scroll a little bit to the bottom. Just enough so that it's right there. Thanks, Tom. So basically, anonymous is what it implies. It's a reporting party, a resident, it may not even be a resident, it could be someone that is observing the activity, so it's basically a patron that is submitting the request to, through our GO-GOV system, which develops this report of, we see this type of activity, and it could be anything from what you see there, a vehicle idling, to business operating happening, you know, before 7:00 a.m., but obviously breaking our code. So anonymous means that the person just doesn't want to be known. Code officer is exactly what that is, and what you'll notice is that where there's a code officer linked, it's construction. So in other words, during the weekend, at a home in Los Alamitos, our Code Enforcement Officer identified that it's construction-related. So what they'll do is, again, seek compliance through the individual, the homeowner. These are all homeowner-related, the for brevity of what we're trying to do tonight with residential. But a lot of the enforcement, per se, is done on the commercial side, because it's a lot larger risk and a lot more invasive in terms of machinery and type of work. So for the sake of our report tonight, this is only addressing the homeowner, but that's what that implies, is that a code enforcement officer was on patrol, and they identified that, hey, you're performing construction-related type of activity. And as I mentioned, it's only four of those that were creating those noise nuisance conditions.
Right, so I see quite a bit of construction, some of them say anonymous, some of them say code enforcer. So last time when we were discussing it, we were also talking about SOPs, which you didn't get into today with regards to anonymous tips, code enforcement officers, and the location in which the noise level meter is used for the violation, whether it be on the property line of the individual, at the place of the nuisance, so on and so forth. So without that much clarity as to, you know, where the individual comes up, I just have, you know, on the one hand, I believe you said nobody's going around patrolling, but then now it kind of looks like they are. So I just want to get clarity on what those SOPs are, as well as what the variance is between an anonymous tip and if the noise level is actually impacting that person who made the complaint, or if it's just a neighbor who is disgruntled and is happening to walk by, it's not hurting them, no actual neighbors are affected by the noise, and how we can limit those types of violations.
Sure. So I'd be happy to go over the report in a little bit more clarity. So on page 16 of your report, it's going to detail the step-by-step standard operating procedures. And again, what our Code Enforcement is doing is they're trying to spot issues in the city that are invading quality of life. So in this scenario, with a Code Enforcement Officer identifying that there's construction on a weekend, there's one of two things that are happening. It's either happening before the hours permit it, and I'll use the word permit in kind of a segue to our department, is that much of the construction that has to take place at a home requires a permit. And there's pretty good communication between our planning, our building, and our Code Enforcement Division. When there's something that's glaring obvious or an issue, our department is very much aware that there are certain restrictions to what type of construction activity can occur specifically on a weekend. So we have two Code Enforcement Officers currently, and they're both actively making sure that the quality of life standards in the city are held. When they observe that there is construction happening, let's say on a Sunday, that's a no-no. So yes, in a sort of backwards attempt, I'm going to say we're not out there trying to catch people in the act, but at the same time, they're trying to uphold the quality of life values in the city. So when they see that type of activity on a Sunday, that's what's going to be sort of drawing that red flag of, hey, we know you're performing construction, we understand that you want to get this stuff done, but here are the standards of which you have to operate. And so that is what the first step is typically relating to, is they're either being notified by a resident anonymously, or they're actively doing that because they're identifying that there's been a problem. But as we progress towards the next sort of steps in place, yes, they're going to use this to determine if, for whatever reason, it's not construction-related, it's more of just a vehicle idling that's being reported. They're not going to go out there, and they're going to wait for the person to start their car again if they're not doing it on the spot. They're going to inform the resident, hey, we received a report, this is what was reported, please, we're just trying to seek compliance. And when it's regarding vehicle idling, it's more than likely an auto repair, it's not just someone trying to leave their house for the day, per se. So there's a lot of, again, subjectivity, there's a lot of discretionary action on this.
Now, I think there's one confusion I have, because last time we discussed that it's not necessarily the construction that is the problem. Construction is in fact allowed as long as it's under the decibel level and the actual noise ordinance. So I want to make that clear, that construction is allowed as long as it is below that 55 decibel, that 55's decibel range. Is it typical for your Code Enforcement Officers to not only explain the violation, but when they provide the notice of violation, they write down the city ordinance, the code that was violated, possibly how it was determined that the noise level was exceeding at a certain point, or whatever the violation is, was in excess of that violation? Is that typically what is on these notice of violations?
Yes, and let me just go back to your first statement. So construction-related activity is allowed, per se, as long as, again, the contractual work is permitted, that it's not operating under, before, after hours of our code, and ultimately, like, not on a Sunday, per se, right? Any sort of construction-related activity has to occur, and there's exemptions. And I have the code that I can recite, so it's, "The following activities shall be exempt from the provisions of this chapter. Noise sources associated with construction, repair, remodeling, or grading of any real property, provided a permit has been obtained from the city and further provided, the activities do not take place between the hours of 8:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. on weekdays and on Saturdays, or at any time on Sundays or federal holidays." And that's 17 dot 20 dot 020. So in other words, we do have certain restrictions for construction-related activity.
Well, and exemption implies that you're not allowed to do it between a certain hours in excess of a noise level. Doesn't necessarily say it cannot be done. So an exemption is a portion of rule that does not apply at a certain time. So I don't think this, my interpretation of this doesn't say construction is not allowed, it is, construction is not allowed to exceed these noises during these times. A normal ordinance of under 55 decibel, construction would still be allowed. It just doesn't follow under an exemption which is inapplicable other days of the week.
Correct, but under those provisions, that type of construction cannot occur.
But that's my point, but construction can occur.
Correct, but you got to have those provisions in place.
If I could just attempt to clarify with the exemptions, so there's a baseline decibel standard for noise, right? So that's what we're talking about in the noise district one, it's 55 dB during daytime hours, 50 dB at nighttime hours. When we talk about the exemptions, and specifically with construction or home maintenance activities like, you know, lawn mowing or something, what the exemption is saying, it's recognizing that you can conduct construction, and those construction noises are likely to exceed that baseline 50 dB standard, and that's okay under the exemption as long as it falls within the hours specified in the code. So it's a carve-out and an allowance for either contractors or homeowners to actually conduct activities that we all recognize, may cause some temporary noise disturbance, but it's a limitation on the hours within which you can do that. You don't want your neighbor doing a roofing project at 5:30 a.m. on a Saturday. So that's the general intent and scope of those exemptions.
Right, which it goes to my point, if I am laying sod on a Sunday, it is technically a construction project, maybe a repair, but the sod level isn't going to possibly exceed noise because it's, you know, fluffy sod. Doesn't mean I can't do it, even though it's construction. The exemptions say that you can exceed a noise ordinance otherwise, unless it's part of the exemption, right? It's not part of the exemption, it's Sunday at 12:00 p.m., but I'm not exceeding the noise, which means I am allowed to do it under the code, construction or not.
Correct.
Okay? The problem I have, and I brought one example with me today, and I could show it to you, I did redact some things for privacy. The simple inspection on this said, the explanation, it cited no code that was being violated. It simply said municipal code noise, in quotes, no construction on Sunday. Please stop all work on Sundays as it is not allowed. And technically, that's what I want to see as part of our education to our code enforcers, this is incorrect. This is not correct, and I could pass this around, and we could put it on the screen, I don't mind. The problem I have with it is, majority of people living in our city work a nine-to-five, Monday through Friday type of job. A time when costs are high, things that you want to do, home improvements, whatever else, lands on the homeowner to do themselves on their own personal time, happens to be Saturdays and Sundays. I don't like to see somebody coming around and enforcing something against, you know, the people of the city that is arbitrary, right? And especially if it is a situation where no complaint has actually happened, and a code enforcer is coming around and just seeing them do work. And so that's why I asked last time for this information, and thank you for providing that. I personally think a little bit more detail needs to go in to our notice of violations as deciding what codes. This is only one example that I brought today, but I do believe our code enforcers should actually cite code, actually know and understand what the codes are, and have a reading level of what the maybe dB level was on that date or what the violation was, what the ambient noise was, and see what the variance is based on that. I think that would help clarify what the actual infraction was. I still think there needs to be some exception, I've thought a lot about it. On my own free time, I actually did go out with a noise meter on a Sunday, and I walked around my neighborhood, as well as a few other neighborhoods in the city, and I found several violations, mostly having to do with air conditioning units and pool units. They're very loud right now, we got everything going on. But I did see people working on their cars and, you know, banging wrenches, hitting hammers. I even asked a few people, have you been cited for this? No. Okay, thank you, and I walked away. So I just think what might need to be addressed is our SOPs with regard to code enforcement, and possibly implementing some exemption for homeowners to perform some limited construction or something. And I'll leave it at that and let somebody else address their concerns.
Mr. DeBolt?
Yeah, I would echo some of that. I think it needs to be, to me, it's abundantly, if you read the code carefully, it's abundantly clear. But, and if it, and that is, is that basically- But, and if it, and, and that is, is that basically you are allowed to work seven days a week on your property as long as you fall within the noise limitations, okay? And in particular, you know, so everybody can work on their property. The key is the noise level, okay? So, and I think, I think, it might just be the way, I asked, I asked prior to the meeting, I sent an email, I think, off to you. Now, do we have a start time and an end time for construction work, repair work in this city, period? And, 'cause I couldn't find it, okay? Do we have start times and end times? And the, the answer was, refer back to the noise. Well, that isn't the answer to the question, okay? The, the, there is no start time or end time. There is no prohibited time to work on your property in the city, at all. Seven day, if you wanna work on your property seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, you can, provided you don't conflict with the decibel levels that are set. So it's noise, that it's not the activity, it's the noise, okay, level. And then we carve out exemptions to it, specifically A through F in the code. You know, we allow school bans, we allow whatever specifically to exceed it, okay? Just by right, okay? And when it comes to construction or repair remodeling, the, you can do it on the weekdays from seven AM to eight PM. You can do it on Saturdays and Sundays and federal holidays.
Exceed the noise level on those, at those times?
No, provi, again, provided, well, provided you don't exceed the noise level, okay? On Saturday for sure, Sunday, you're reverting back to, you don't have the exemption for the noise level. You can still work, you can still lay your sod, but you've gotta be quiet. You can still get up and roof your, your house, but you can't be making noise that exceeds the decibel level. So if somebody calls up and says, "There's people working," there's no restriction on you working, they better couch that, I'm, I'm, there's a lot of racket going on on Sunday morning, or so, you know, or whatever. They don't, if they don't say that, then there's no, there would be no reason for the code enforcement to even go out, 'cause you can work. I mean, I get out at six in the morning, I'm out sweeping up my, my stuff that's falling off the tree. And I use my leaf blower, my little leaf blower, but I keep it quiet, right? Am I exceeding the level? Probably, but we have some, I only do it for a minute or two, but if we go to item B, section, this is where it helps to read the code. Oh, this is interior noise, but they do have an, oh, here we go. Exterior noise standard seventeen point two oh point oh five oh. B, temporary exceedances. So you can exceed the fifty-five decibel levels for a cumulative period of more than thirty minutes in any hour, and it goes on, and you have the table of where you can, you know, you, you can exceed it. Or cer, so if I, if I have to do a repair on my roof, and I get out there and I take two whacks with the hammer or my nail gun, and I'm, and it's cumulatively, you know, plus five DBA for fifteen minutes in any hour. If I do it in two minutes, three minutes, or four minutes, and you happen to hear it, guess what? I'm, I'm probably within this temporary exceedance. But if I get out there and try to roof, you know, half my roof, and I'm out there pow, 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 on, then that's different. So I think it needs to be understood here that these are exceptions. We're not saying that you can't work on Saturday or Sunday or holidays. We're saying you can do that, but you can't exceed, or if you're doing certain constructions, you are allowed to exceed it, if you're doing construction. In this case, it says with a permit, I, I have a little heartburn with that, because we're talking about noise. We're not talking about whether the job is permitted or not. I, I think, I think we need to tighten this code up, loosen it up a little bit, I mean, because it makes no sense that you're gonna allow somebody to have an exemption provided they have a permit.
And you don't necessarily need a permit.
Well, you don't need a permit for, for concrete work. You don't need a permit for, okay? So if I'm gonna get out here and have a, a truck come up and, and they, you know, so I, I don't think that needs to be in there. If, if, if the code enforcement is driving around anyway, and there's a job being done that requires a permit, that doesn't have a permit, doesn't matter whether there's noise involved or not, you're gonna stop the job and tell the guy to, you know, or a person to, to go ahead. So I think our code needs to be, I, I think we need to tighten this up a little bit, take that out of there. And, and I think with respect to the, and I'm not trying to beat up on the code enforcement. People, I'm, I'm just saying that we, people are allowed to work, the issue is the noise. And so that has to be the, the driving criteria in here. And, and the other thing is, we need to define, 'cause we talk about repair and we talk, talk about maintenance, okay? And we have no definition in our code as to what is a repair and what is maintenance. If you go to our definitions, we don't have any, we don't have one. I printed out, I don't know, did that come, you guys get this too? What's the difference between repair and maintenance? I mean, this, I Goog, I just Googled this and just came up with it. You know, repairs refer to actions taken to restore the proper functionality of an asset. Basically, it's returning something broken back to its optimal working condition, that's a repair, okay? Maintenance means keeping it in working condition. So if I'm gonna maintain my yard, I mow it, I water it, and I'm allowed to do that, okay, on the weekend, and I'm allowed to exceed the decibel level on, including a Sunday, right? I can do it on Sat, I can do it, you know, I can do it on Sundays and a federal holiday, okay? If I wanna mow my yard, I can do that, 'cause I have an exception to the decibel level. It's not, it's, my lawnmower's my lawnmower, unless we have specific somewhere that says you can't use a lawnmower, you can't use a leaf blower, you know, or stuff like that. So I think that's the main thing, and I don't know if this needs to be rewritten to be a little, a little clearer. I don't know if that's, or if it's clear enough, but for sure, I think we need to make sure that the code enforce, and code enforcement people realize that, or understand that it's not the activity, it's the noise that we're trying to evade. And, and as far as people work, I mean, we, you know, a lot of people work nine to, everybody almost works five days a week and they have the weekends. I don't have any problem with the way it is as far as the noise levels. I'm okay with maintenance, construction or anything else, I, I think repairs, those should occur on the, during the week or on a Saturday, and, you know, I, I don't, I mean, I, there are a lot of people who sleep in, I mean, we're not talking about any one item here or there. I think we gotta think about the, the city as a whole. If we've had, you know, twenty-one complaints for noise in the last three months, what would it be if the, if we took away the, you know, the prohibition on Su, Sunday for construction or for repairs? I mean, you'd probably go through the roof. And then also to keep in mind that you are allowed, that you're allowed to periodically or temporarily exceed the decibel level. So even if you are doing construction work on, on a holiday, you can go up to fifteen decibels for a period of more than one minute in any hour. So I don't know, you know, how, where that puts you, maybe that doesn't put you anywhere. I don't, I don't know with respect to, to that. But I think, I think the code as it's written, I think is o, well, it's not okay. I think we need to eliminate the, this language regarding a permit. I think we need to define repair and maintenance and have that in there so that's, and, and even then, that's gonna still be a bit subjective because, you know, you know, what's a re, repair? I mean, a guy, if I, if I'm, if I got wood rot on the side of my, on a fascia board, and I wanna knock the fascia board off or cut a piece out and put a new piece in, I'm doing maintenance on my house, but I got a, a part of a board that's not, I'm not gonna replace the whole board, just part of the board. So is that a repair, or is that a, is it a maintenance? But, and I think the saving grace on it is, is if I take my skill saw and saws all and cut that piece out real quick and exceed whatever code there is for about three minutes, and then I nail a, a new piece back in, you know, come on out and try to give me a ticket. It's like, show, I'll show you the code. Come back and catch me in five years when I do it again. But, but, so anyway, I think it's, I think it's good because this type of stuff, when we get this, I mean, it's, it's a bit of an eye-opener, but at the same time, it just, you know, I, I think we, this is what we're here to do, is maybe just tighten it up a little bit, and that our, our city staff can go out there and, and not be, you know, if they don't quite understand it, then they end up, you know, giving violations that aren't violations technically. I mean, unless they caught him with the noise, stuff like that. So that's what I, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I think it's, that's part of this process that we're going through is, is just to, everybody learns from it and so forth. Mr. Gross?
I agree a lot with Commissioner DeBolt. One of the things I have the hardest time from is the decibel level, 'cause I don't understand what it is. I imagine if I went out there and turned on my car and you were in here, I already exceeded it. But I don't totally understand that type of thing in my neighborhood, for instance. I don't know if I'm sitting in my house, how much it is, I can't equate it. So if you were at that back door and we were just sitting up here talking, are we exceeding it and by how much? You know, that's what confuses me. At what point can we put it to where that is imposing on the rights of other people? And we're all gonna do things out in our yards, I hope, I like to see people out of the house, I like to see kids out of the house. I like people being outdoors on weekends, doing things, even if they're doing them in their garage, on their house, or activities. But I don't want them to feel as if they can't do anything because of a decibel level. And that's what I agree with, we've gotta establish that.
For, if I may, for one, one of the instances that I saw going around, around, walking around the city, you know, like I said, there was some construction going on, people were, you know, doing repair work or, or maintenance work to their house. But also there, I think that, I think I counted seven jumpy's with generators on people's front yards. Technically, those would definitely violate any no, noise ordinance, it was on a Sunday. Nobody's saying anything 'cause it's kids having fun. But if code enforcement is out there running around, could they issue a notice violation to those people? They didn't need a permit because it's on their own land, they didn't need, you know? This is where I think the subjectivity needs to come to the education of the code enforcement officers, as well as if it is a drive-by, or if it is, if there's actually a noise complaint, how is it being measured? I personally think that even if you, if you can statistically go back to those eleven cases, that it was construction, and it was construction by a homeowner, and the six of them, who made the complaint? Go to their doorstep and see if there's an actual noise. See if you could hear the noise and if there's a noise violation. 'Cause you can walk up to anybody's lot line, and they could be talking to their wife in the front yard and violating a noise ordinance while raking their leaves, okay? I think that's where the clarity in the enforcement and, and operating procedures and how it's notated in here. And I also get that, you know, hey, anonymous complaints, we're not gonna go point any fingers anybody out, but honestly, if it's somebody making a complaint, I, I, I think it should, they should show that they're actually being affected. Uh, you know, that's something I think should be addressed.
I think from the, I would just say from a practical point of view, it's gonna be, it would be kind of hard to do that. I think it more gets into, it more gets into the, the education arena, but at the same time, the noise is elusive. If, 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 if somebody's out there doing, all I can say, you know, if, if it's actual construction, they're out there working away, and they're creating noise, okay? Fine, the construction's fine, but you're, you know, you're out here, you're hanging drywall, you're wall, you know, it's, you're, you're all wide open, and you're banging on, you know, four nails, you know, down the, if somebody complains, odds are the code person's gonna probably come out and catch them in the act, straight away. Okay, on the other hand, somebody complains and somebody's out there and they're done, they just putting up one piece of drywall, they did it, they're gone, and they're done, or whatever. Code for, gonna go out there and there's nothing to, nothing to do unless you, you catch them in the act. All you can do is just say, "Well, you know, this is our ordinance, you can do your work, but you can't make the noise." And, and, you know, that type of a thing. And, and then in, in the end, it gets down to neighbors and, you know, I mean, if you're working on Sunday, I mean, it just depends on the sensitivities of people around you and, and.
I'd like to just expand on, on that, because we're, I think we're all saying the same thing, just in different forms, that code enforcement is not just issuing citations. They're providing education, once they've obtained confirmation, like, that is why they take the device. That is why they sit at the property line, they use subjectivity. If it's kids in a jumper, of course, it's gonna draw the decibel. But we're not shutting down a party, you know? We're not issuing a, a citation right away. A lot of it is going to be with discretion, with logic, with common sense. To your point, yes, we can sharpen how we're providing definitions and codes if, in that example, it's lacking. But the protocol shows that they do identify what code is being violated. They have to demonstrate proof that they went out. It's not just that they're just dropping a ticket and leaving. They have to demonstrate that there's an ability to spot the issue. So even if it's an anonymous tip, or it's reported by a resident, like, they identify themselves, the address shows, they still have to catch, in other words, the person in the act of performing that type of nuisance. So that is where you'll see that of these twenty-one cases in six months, that's, I don't believe that's even scratching the surface of what is actually happening out there. And so you're kind of proving your point of, we're not out there to invade people's quality of life either way, right? We're just trying to preserve it in the best way that we can. But to your point, we can look at ways that we can broaden the code to provide a little bit more definition for maintenance, repair, really tighten our belts to make sure that we're providing the best type of education with definitions, with the criteria. Those are all things that we can certainly accomplish and will work towards.
And I didn't see from there, and I don't think there probably was any, but repeat offenders, you, you give them a notice violation, you educate them, they do it again the following weekend. What, at what point does a citation get issued?
Well, I know that in one example, we provide them a timeline, whether it be thirty days, depending on what type of activity. And if in that time span, it's still ongoing, then they progress to the next step. And then each citation is concurrent. In other words, we issue one citation, which in this case, it's not, but for a commercial situation, citation is issued, there's another set of thirty, sixty days, ninety days, whatever. And then it just continues until there's compliance that is met. But in all of these examples that we cited, we didn't get to that point.
Right, right, okay.
And if I can.
Let's do, I'll do, uh, do you, you wanna say anything? Okay, perfect, go ahead.
All right, just to follow up. So, repeat, repeat offenses, okay? Uh, I mean, I manage property, I know how this goes. I mean, uh, y- you have to catch them in the act or if it's your, i- if you have somebody complaining over and over, you know, you might have the, be nice about it. You have the person who has really sensitive ears, okay? And so at some point, if it's re- repeat, but the code enforcement officer cannot catch the act, then at some point you're gonna have to say, okay, you're gonna have to complain. That, that individual, instead of being anonymous, is gonna have to, I would think, put their name on the line before you can then issue any type of a letter or anything, uh, beyond that, right?
So, perfect example, we had a situation occur at a, at a residence where they were, um, flashing lights out of a window. So not related to noise, but still some sort of gray area about quality of life issues and code enforcement, looked at, looked up the code and there was some, some language there that allowed them to go out. So what they did is they scheduled themselves to stay and observe. They did it on a reoccurring basis. Again, to the point that it might've been reported, but they didn't just issue a, a letter or a notice. They had to observe it. And they went once, went back out, a second time they saw it. Boom, 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 knock on the door. Here's the language, here's the code, please make sure that you comply. Issue resolve, no more reports. So that is more or less the pathway to getting compliance. Um, so yes, the, again, code isn't ba- you know, trying to hide behind the badge and ultimately just sending things out. They're, they're trying to seek evidence or onsite, in-person, uh, compliance that way.
So I think, um, if, if I got this right, it's a weird, it was great discussion, great, great points, and I think you'll, you'll work with, um, staff and, and the compliance officers, they can maybe even watch, watch this meeting, our discussion, cause it was kind of a good discussion, and then we just kinda go from there, just kinda.
Well, could we, I'd like to see something a little more definitive. I, you know, we go through our codes, you know, we've, we've had this, we find these inconsistencies or stuff that's in a code that, you know, until it comes before us, we have no reason to look at it and then we try to clean stuff up. We've been doing that over the years when we come across, uh, issues that might create problems. I think if, if we wanna need to discuss further, the idea of re- of requiring a permit, providing a permit has been obtained. I, I really feel that's unneeded, I mean, it probably doesn't hurt anything, but I, I think it's, so my permit gives me license to make noise, you know, uh, whereas if I don't have a permit, I, I, I can't. Okay, so I, I really think that needs to be eliminated and I don't know if the attorney, you guys need to talk about that, that's, you know.
I, I circled, I circled that as well, the permit word.
And then also a definition, I mean, I, I think we need to have in our, in this, uh, in our list of definitions, uh, in our code, what is a repair and what is maintenance? When it comes to real property. And, and even when you get a, and I'll give you this if you want, you can, oh, you got it, everybody's got it, okay, so, uh, you, you can craft something or work with something that pertains to, uh, this ordinance and then.
I, I'm wondering, is this something that we wanna kinda keep a list throughout the year? Kind of a thing, or?
Well, or however they wanna do it. It needs, it's just this one item needs to come back. I mean, it can come back as a two-line change to the code, that probably has to go to the council, probably has to do all sorts of stuff.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we want, just for that small amount, do we want it to go through all that whole process? Or do we wanna keep a list of this so when we do have another one or we?
This is ongoing, I mean, I think I'd probably do it now, this.
Yes, I, I think the item as agendized and the recommendation contemplates that the planning commission would direct staff to return to the planning commission with a resolution recommending a code amendment to the city council to address whatever concerns were discussed this evening. So, um, I, I'm not trying to dictate what the motion might be, but I am hearing Commissioner DeBolt referencing possibly the need to eliminate the requirement for a permit in order to qualify for the exemption for construction noise exceedances.
Right.
And then also the need to add definitions and clarify and differentiate between what constitutes remodeling, repair, construction versus maintenance of real property, so.
And one other thing, just, and, and, and clarity that you, we are not restricting activity on their properties. Not trying to enact the blue law or something that, you know, you can't work on Sundays or you can't do this on the, you know, it's, you can't, it's the noise. You, you, you can do whatever you want to do with respect, like construction stuff, except, you know, the noise. And then you have exemptions for that by date and by, okay?
So, yeah, so if it's, it's the, if it is the pleasure of the planning commission and we, and we go down that path, the next step then would be for us to return at the next regular meeting with a resolution proposed zoning code amendment that the commission would then be able to discuss again and, and make sure you're comfortable with the language, perhaps fine tune it, uh, and then depending on what decision the planning commission makes at that point, the recommendation would ultimately go up to city council for their consideration.
You want the noise level in there too?
No, I think the noise levels, I mean, how?
And, to the echo, yeah. It is, um, on his thing with construction, I agree with you because when we do a project for construction, we specify the hours in there. So that doesn't need to actually be into this one, so I agree with Commissioner DeBolt.
Make a motion.
I will make a motion.
I, I, I do, I have a quick question before the motion, cause, just for, for what might be brought back, uh, to us next time. Um, where was I going with this? Give me a second, I'll get there. The issue of, of construction, I think is, was addressed ni- nicely by Chair DeBolt, um, that it doesn't limit construction and, you know, the, the, one scenario of no construction on Sunday is, is a false state. I think that we, i- i- I don't know if we can incorporate in the code, um, procedures in which the decibels are being sought or if that is just something that is an internal SOP for our enforcement officers. Cause I think that truly would alleviate a lot of my concerns, um, just by their education, regardless of the code, because their subjectivity right now isn't subjective if they believe no construction on Sundays. That's not subjective, that is a de- definitive term. Um, so, my biggest thing is if we don't increase the volume limits or if we don't specifically address that, is it really gonna change anything? And I, I don't know if it would, um, unless it is specifically put in there. So, um, I don't know how we can, how we can change that, but enforceability of a vague,
There's no enforceability. I mean, you're, okay, think about it. The, we have a decibel level of, what is it, fifty-five, fifty or fifty-five? Fifty, all the time.
No, I know.
Okay, that's it, okay. So if we're gonna raise anything, we would have to raise that.
Right, and, and that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and, and if you did that, then we're not talking about weekends. Right now, for, for anybody doing work on their pro- we're talking about property and we work on properties and stuff like that in maintenance, okay? If you do it within those hours, you are exempt. If you wanna go ahead and run a, 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 uh, gas lawnmower at three feet at ninety-five decibels, you can do that. If your lawnmower's acting up and it's, and it's putting it out at, you know, a hundred and twenty, like a jet plane flying over, you're still exempt. He's not gonna come out there because your stuff is, you're out there working, you're nailing, you're doing whatever to build the house. The exemption is the exemption. We're not, we're not limiting the decibel level, uh, for whatever they're doing, as long as it's related to the construction and, you know, if you have to drive footings into the ground and you got a pile driver out there, you know, that's, you know, shaking the, the houses and this and, you know, with that noise, I, I, it might be a bit extreme, but I mean, but you are exempt. But if you, so we have no decibel limitations as long as you fall within the exemption. Hours and days.
No, and, and that's what I understand, but again, like I, like we have here, a, a bouncy with a generator on a Sunday is technically over the noise violation. You're doing, so it's, it's about subjectivity. So my, my whole point is, I think there, whether, I, and I don't even know if this is within our jurisdiction, if we can even regulate SOPs for the city or, or, you know, encourage certain things, but, um, but I just wanna see it more, uh, enforced across the board and not limitations on certain thing, you know, exceptions or I'm just gonna ignore that one for this person, cause they're not really making it.
Well, no, the exception is what we're talking about. It's, it is, it is for construction and maintenance of the property, which is what we deal with primarily in here. We're not dealing with, I guess we could, uh, but.
But it's a noise ordinance.
This issue is, is, is with respect to noise related to, uh, construction, maintenance and repair. When, I mean, I'm curious as to, I saw the one with the AC unit. Uh, what's with the AC unit? If it's, unless it's, you know, unless it's howling, you know, and, and if it's operating, how do you, how do you, if, if my AC unit was installed, installed properly and all of that, uh, what are you gonna do? I'm gonna turn it off in a hun- in ninety-degree heat here? You know, no. I mean, but I, I, you know, I, I, or pool equipment that's loud, as long as you're, uh, you know, I don't know, you, you have to be within a certain decibel level on pool equipment and stuff like that. I mean, maybe if it's, needs repair, you do, but, uh, I, I.
Well, that's just my point. Addressing, addressing only the, uh, you know, difference between maintenance and repair and, and the other things that you addressed, I don't think addresses the, my biggest concern, which is actually the allowance of people to, you know, do construction and, uh, possibly exceed at a noise level of fifty-five decibels o- on their property line. If, if we put in there that the noise, the noise level can exceed fifty to five from the place of the, um, complaint, I think that would.
That's only if you're operating outside the parameters of.
Yeah.
Of, of the, that you have here, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, if you're, if you're operating within the parameters, I mean, if you, if, if you wanna have no limitation on, or you wanna set a, a de- a decibel level higher than, I mean, you have unlimited, I mean, if I'm wrong, you guys can correct.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify, there are, there are baseline standards for even like frequency and time.
Yeah.
For example, I'm reading, I'm reciting a portion of our ordinance here, it's seventeen dot two zero, dot zero five zero. It's under exterior noise standards and there's a baseline. Ultimately, anything that is above the decibel noise level, whether it be daytime, nighttime, under the certain time restrictions, there has to be a cumulative period of thirty minutes or more of that specific noise, that, whether it's a hum or banging or whatever noise that is. So again, to, to the point is there, there's subjectivity, but then there's also the language that allows us to have enforcement.
Okay, then, if I may, then, we start this ordinance out by saying that we, we, uh, in twenty point ten, our purpose is we, we establishes, we establish the noise regulations to control unnecessary and excessive and all of this, and then the very first item are the exceptions. And, and I can tell you right now that, I mean, I, I think these exceptions are the exceptions for getting this exceed, th- th- these exceedances, these temporary exceedances, to me, ha- the way I read it, and if I'm reading it wrong, then, then this is apart from the exception. These are for people who don't fall within the exception.
That, that's my reading, well, that's my understanding of it.
So I, with all due respect, I think you're, there are no limitations in the exception. I mean, if you're building your house and you, your contractor or you require the use of some kind of a tool that's gonna blow the socks off of the, the decibel levels in here, you can do that between the hours and on the days, you know, and, you know, when you're working, because you're building, cause you're building your house. So, so we're not gonna set a, but if you're talking about on the, like, let's just say Sunday and federal holidays for construction, because you can do maintenance on Sundays and fed- so we're talking construction now. So construction, remodeling, if you're gonna be doing that on, on Sundays and federal holidays, then, you know, then you can't exceed the, the, the current baseline, except temporarily. You know, you can go up to plus fifteen decibels, you can go to sixty-five.
And, and I think that's, that's, that was my point. I think we need, I, I would like to see addressed in a res- in a recommendation, some of those, not just, cause you're talking about the difference between exceptions and exemptions, which are two, actually two different things. The exemptions are the Monday through Friday and Saturdays for construction.
Yes.
They do not have to follow the noise ordinance at all during those time periods. They are exempt from the citation.
For that, for activities relating to that, yes.
The, for, the part I'm thinking, I, I'd like to see a re- a resolution to, is as a homeowner, can we carve out an exception to the Sunday rule for in particular, construction, if that's what we're gonna call it, or anything, you know, any other noise ordinance that would allow me to perform some work on those times? I personally would like to see it because if it's, oh, people sleep in, okay, well then limit the time, ten AM to four PM. Um, I don't think it's right to have, you know, essentially have something say that you can do it Saturdays, but not Sundays. I, I, I think this is somewhat archaic, uh, in my opinion, um, with, you know, Sunday being a day of rest or whatever else might be. Um, I would rather see the exemption extend to also include Sundays for work. Now, with that being said, I don't necessarily wanna see crews of construction out there on Sa- on Sundays with people yielding fifteen guys on a, on a house doing a roof repair either. However, if we have some sort of resolution that could include minor home remodeling or minor thing when a homeowner is present, that's what I'm talking about. Being able to carve out an additional exception for people to be able to work on their property, work on their car, work on something during these times, um, that's not gonna subject them to a notice violation, um, if it is personal in nature and they are performing the work themselves. So, that's what I wanna, I, I would like to see if that can be carved in and if not, and it gets outvoted, that's, then so be it. But I'd like to see that part of a, a recommendation as well. Do you follow that?
So the question is, well, well, to boil it down, it would be, uh, we've changed the code to, to allow for noise, ex- noise, construction noise on Sundays and holidays.
Which could be an option.
Yeah, I don't think that's, I don't think that's gonna fly.
I, I'll go back to my original motion.
No, I'm just, we're, but we're going to motion to see resolution.
Yeah.
We could, that's, we're not approving anything, they're gonna come back with our recommendations, which then we modify.
Yeah.
So, if they give us a couple different options to maybe address my concern about, um, and, and maybe it's not even part of the actual, um, uh, municipal code that's gonna change on my recommendation, it's simply a change in the operating procedures that our code enforcement people operate. Cause I think with that, with that knowledge of, hey, they, they can do construction, that's not an issue. They have to exceed it by fifteen decibels for longer than thirty minutes, blah, 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 you have to take it this certain way, that can address a lot of my concerns either, as well.
Yeah.
So that's, that's my thing, isn't necessarily, I'm not here to just change the code to make exceptions and, and extend the exemptions, but I don't know how far we can go on recommendations to also see what the operating procedures and what our code enforcement officers are actually doing.
I, I, I would add to that, that the, the code enforcement prosecution and standard operating procedures are not typically something that's codified or falls under the purview of the planning commission. That, that's internal to the code enforcement in terms of. That's internal to the code enforcement in terms of how they determine the best manner of enforcing the code is and what their priorities are for enforcement.
That's, and that was my question is, I don't even think we could do that, but if we can't do that, then I think there should be some language in there identifying what in particular, you know, have less subjectivity here, and what in particular is a violation or how is it measured? And if that is enforced in the code, and that is something we can change on how it is measured and the actual SOPs are incorporated within the code on how far away you're standing away to measure the fifteen plus decibel reading over thirty minutes, how was it read? That's when we, that's what we can change. So, that's what I'm saying, is can we incorporate SOPs within the actual modification of the code to help the concerns I have? Instead of just changing, you know, my dates.
Yeah, I thought that's gonna be super, super hard. I think it's already has some subjectivity, subjectivity to itself right now. I think even adding that in is gonna create more problems. That's just my take on it.
Excuse me, Chair, I just want some clarification. I'm taking notes here over here, but I'm hearing a couple of different things here, right? So, we internally will definitely take a look at the SOPs for the code enforcement division, right? Yes, like the city attorney stated, that that's not under the purview of the planning commission, but, you know, the director and the manager, we will talk with our code enforcement division to take a look at that and basically, you know, clean it up, or what Irving said was to sharpen it up a little bit, right? But we could definitely do that, but what I want clarification is, if we don't change the code and we sharpen up our standard operating procedures, according to the code currently right now, any type of work on Sundays, if it exceeds the DBA for X number of time, which I think it says like thirty minutes, then they can sit there and say that's a notice of violation. Okay? So, but I'm also hearing from you that you would like to include Sunday as an exemption between 10 to four. Is that correct?
I think that was just one option, that if we had a, because our next step was for you guys to come back and provide us some recommendations for changes. So, Mr. DeBolt said, you know, one change is just modifications. He said, I'm also recommending possibly, you know, the additional change or additional thing, I don't know if I gotta do it on second motion, of also including extending the hours to include Sundays as it is with Saturdays. Federal holidays, we can keep the same, fine.
Okay, so at the end of the day, we need direction from the planning commission to provide us all kind of a baseline on what type of ordinance change or, you know, suggestions to come back. Because we could go in a lot of different directions here, but we need a kind of like a baseline, a recommendation from the planning commission to provide us to come back with something.
Okay, I'll add. Commissioner Sol McCannick.
Yes, I think we can improve this tremendously if we just, as Commissioner DeBolt says, we provide some definitions. I think we need to find maintenance, repair, I think we need to find, what is grading, I mean, what is maintenance? I think a lot of the, a lot of the noise pollution that we see is gardening and lawn mowers and things like that. Does that come under maintenance? I think, I think we need to define some of these activities, because I think we define activities, we've already got the DBA set. If we define in the hour set, although there's a request to expand the hours, but I think we need to define the activities more. And I don't like the maintenance definition that Commissioner DeBolt gave. Art, I think it's specific to machines and I don't think.
That's what I said, this is not, this has to be geared to
Yes.
real property. This is, this is just a.
Just example.
An example.
Right.
Yeah, it has to, yeah, I'm not, don't incorporate, it's gotta be crafted to fit.
I think tightening the definitions would really help everybody and probably the best way to go about this.
Right. I have one question, if you don't mind, Chair.
Yeah.
To Mr. Noda, I want to make sure. If, if a person is operating during normal business or within the prescribed hours, you're doing the construction end of it, not the maintenance, okay, and they're using equipment that exceeds the temporary exceedances that are listed, am I, did I hear, are you saying that they could be cited with that?
They can. So, typically, we talked about permitting, right? It's very important to permit, because permitting is not, we're permitting you to exceed a noise ordinance. We're permitting you to do the job, right? And sometimes the permitting is tied to building and safety, right? And so, that's what the definition of permitting is. We're not, we're not providing a permit so you can go do the job to exceed a noise level, right? But if a, let's take a property, right, we had one on the item today is an empty lot that wants to build a four unit building, right? And they're gonna go in there and they're gonna, just use your example earlier, pile dry because they want to put their housing on stilts, right? It's gonna exceed that normal noise decibel, we will ask them to notice the surrounding residential, to let them know that during this timeframe, we're going to exceed this normal, normal operating noise level because we have to, and the reason why, we're gonna pound stilts or anything like that. So, I relate that to like what the city does, right? We try our very best to not do construction work at night, right? Because we have very strict noise ordinances at night. But sometimes, again, due to what I like to call the quality of life, because of traffic, school traffic, et cetera, we have to do work at night. We deem that it's a lesser of two evils. That's why we require them to notice the homes that surrounds that work, to let them know that there will be work and there will be a possibility of the noise going over that ordinance. And if they have any issues, they have to contact the contractor or the city at that time.
That's okay. I guess I'm gonna go back to the city attorney, because I think there's a, again, a little, I am, if I'm wrong, that's fine, then we need to make, we need to clarify this. The way I read the exemption that we allow for construction, for construction activities, that they are exempt from the noise standards, period, okay? So that they can get their building built, okay? And noticing, if you want to notice, want to be nice to notice, fine, but I, I don't read the exceedances as being within the confines of the, within that exemption. To me, the exceedances are for those noises that occur either construction-related before or after, or no, not even before or after, yeah, yeah, even before or after. They're allowed to exceed for short durations, you know, the, the standards. I mean, the purpose of the exemption is right, and if it's not, then we need to clarify this, because if this is something that needs to be, you know, clarified, then we need to clarify that, because I, I take it as, you get out there and you roof your house, if you're using a saw and whatever, and it's, and it's, I can tell you, it's gonna be way past these decibel levels and.
So, let me, let me ask a clarifying question. Are you asking, I might have been confused, are you asking, let's take example, saw during, let's say, a Monday at one o'clock in the afternoon, where you're allowed to do that type of work?
Yeah.
You can, yes, you can exceed that noise at that time.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I mean, for what you said didn't seem to jive with what we were talking, because we.
Yeah.
Yes.
I can't help myself. I love reading this stuff, so this is a fun conversation. So, seventeen point twenty point zero five zero, the exterior noise standard, or I'm sorry, seventeen twenty point zero two zero, the exemptions.
Yes.
Leads off with the following activities shall be exempt from the provisions of this chapter.
That's it.
And then continues to speak to construction noises during specified hours on certain days.
Right.
So, during the timeframe specified in this exemption, you could have a roofer at your home. You can have a contractor crew in a commercial lot, you know, putting up drywall, whatever the case may be. And that may well exceed our exterior noise standards during that period. That's okay. We understand that construction is necessary, it's noisy. But the purpose of the code in terms of maintaining quality of life is trying to clarify that, please don't do that before 7 a.m.
Right.
Right? So, that's the point of the exemptions. That's, it was a policy decision made at some time that Sundays with respect to construction activity would be a day where we would enforce the normal standards that you wouldn't fall under this exemption. So, in that case, if you need to construct some, or if you need to carry out some sort of construction activity, you can do that as long as you fall within the baseline limits or within these time-based exceedance thresholds.
Temporary exceedances, right.
So, so on a Sunday, I can go out into my, at my house, if I own a house in Los Alamos, and I could start roofing, you know,
Right.
at any time on Sunday. And if I'm below fifty or don't go over fifty for thirty minutes, that's okay. Now, whether that's likely to happen in application is a question for the noise experts, which I'm certainly not, but but that's just sort of the reading of the code and I think what the underlying policy underpinnings of the code are.
Okay, and then lastly, with respect to the permit, the noise is the noise, whether it's a permitted job or an unpermitted job. So, I don't see the relevance of having the permit language in here, okay? I mean, because you're gonna, if somebody calls you out on noise and it's a job that's not permitted, that should be permitted, forget the noise, you stop the job till you go get a permit, okay? And if it, if it.
Doesn't need a permit.
Yeah, if it doesn't need a permit, then it's still, they still have to comply with the noise standards. So, or, and they get the exemption if it's construction-related, but not, not requiring a permit, so.
And even if you have a permit, you have to fall within those hours.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm just, I'm just, I'm doing, I'm mentioning this only for, it's just extraneous language and it, and it, it could be read that, yeah, if you get a permit, you can exceed the, but you still have to be within the hours. I mean, so a non-permitted job, you're, you're, you're in violation anyway.
Okay, yeah, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, it's just, it's just to clean it up. If we got excess language, like.
If I could speak to the permit issue, I, this, I don't know exactly what the origins of that are. I suspect that perhaps the desire was to discourage unpermitted work and to have one more
Right.
clause for enforcement, so that if someone's doing unpermitted work that would otherwise require a building permit, now you're violating, now you're not covered by the exemption.
Right.
So, more likely that you enforce the noise ordinance with respect to that effort, and then you're also probably pursuing enforcement for unpermitted work.
Yeah, you stop the job.
But I think you've raised a good point, that there's a fair amount of construction-type activities that would not require a building permit in the traditional sense, whether it's putting up a small yard, a small fence in your yard or something along those lines.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'll just note also, so I take your point, and just glancing at the sample language that staff compiled from other jurisdictions, it looks like
They don't put that on there.
they don't have that requirement, so.
I even made.
So, I've heard you all on that point, and to the extent we receive that direction, we'll remove that permit requirement.
I even made a note here, it says, can you pull a permit if you don't need a permit? You know, that was why I commented on that, so that's why I would agree.
You'd be happy to take your money.
Okay, so, I'll make the motion.
So, your motion, you can go with your own motion, I'll do another motion on.
Yeah, that's fine. So, I'll make the motion that we, was it already made?
We'll second it. Yes, I did. But you can either first or second it.
I'll second it.
Okay.
So, we have a motion and we have a second. Do you understand the motion?
Yeah, so I have here to essentially provide better definition for maintenance and repair-related work and to eliminate the permit terminology within the current code or recommend a different language to support that, so that noise is not exceeding. So, it's just specifically to permit.
Yeah. Anything else?
And now, do we have an alternate motion that we want to consider?
Well, no, then the, oh, I mentioned, to make it clear that, that construction is allowed, that it pertains to the noise. That's, yes, so that would be the motion, and then we may have a substitute after that, but.
And then do I make a second motion or an alternate motion?
If you'd like to make a substitute or alternate motion, then we'll consider that and then come back to the original motion.
So.
I would like to, with the inclusion of that, also include the possibility of extending Part E of this to maybe include the noise sources associated with maintenance of real property, provided the activities take place on Sundays between nine a.m. to six p.m., just like it, and associate that with D. However, I would say that it can be limited to non-commercial construction and homeowner-based only provisions. So, my point is not to have full construction crews out there, but if somebody is doing repair to their own property or construction on their own property, that would be an allowed exemption under Part E, which does allow for work to be performed on Sundays between nine a.m. and six p.m. So, I think adding, I think my point is adding maintenance of real property or construction by a homeowner of their real property between the hours of nine a.m. and six p.m. on Sunday or a federal holiday.
Okay.
Well, maintenance is already covered, so you're talking, you're just talking about D.
I'm adding in to Part E and/or construction repair by a homeowner on their own property.
Can we have clarification? Do you want to state homeowner or property owner?
Property.
Uh, property owner.
I need to define that too. Is that okay if I speak?
Sure.
Okay.
Why don't we say resident of the city, because it also covers renters and stuff like that as well? So, if you rent a house, can you work at the house? They're not a homeowner, so.
No, tenants can't pull permits.
Yeah, but the tenants, I don't think are allowed.
They don't pull permits, tenants don't. So, it'd be an owner.
It'd be a homeowner or a property owner.
Well, and owner, property owner.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not saying I support the motion, but just get it clear.
That's to include non-commercial in that same sort of language as well.
Non-commercial property owners, yes.
Well, isn't, I'm asking Tom and our city attorney, don't we consider multi-residential as commercial?
Yeah, you need to, in the R, just call it in the R zones.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can move, first of all, we'll need to see if the motion game is tracking. And I think depending on where we go from there, some of these nuanced aspects of it will need to be kind of sussed out when we return, so.
A substitute.
Okay, so we have two motions.
Substitute motion, we'll need to ask if there's a second for the substitute. If there is, we'll take a vote. If there's not, then we return to the first motion and take a vote.
Gotcha. So, do we have a second on the second motion?
Where's my partner today? He's gone.
Okay, so, seeing that we don't have a second on the, on the second motion, we'll return to the first motion.
And now we'll look for a second on the.
Now, we're looking for a second for Mr. DeBolt's motion. Do we have a second? Okay, Commissioner Gross seconds the first motion, so, all those in favor of the first motion?
Aye.
Aye.
No, just kidding, aye.
Aye.
Kind of joke about it a little bit.
Yeah.
Unanimous, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Art, don't use your leaf blower on Sundays, I'm gonna call on you.
Staff reports. Anybody?
There's no staff reports.
No staff reports, okay, great. Items from the Development Services Department.
Yes, Chair, I do have a few items that I'd like to just present tonight. As a reminder, our short-term rental survey is still ongoing with the closure date of July 30th, so, Sunday. That's our final day to participate in the survey. If you haven't already done so, we've had pretty overwhelming results so far, so I imagine we'll continue to get some more, and then at the next meeting, we'd be happy to provide an update on the final results. We were given approval by city council to proceed with our Pine Streets grant program, which is gonna benefit our local restaurants, our local home-based food-related businesses to basically apply for a grant up. to basically apply for a grant up to five thousand dollars to set up a booth and, or an exhibitor, serve as an exhibitor to provide tastings of their business at the upcoming Celebrate Los Allo event in September. So if you have any friends or know of any favorite restaurants in town that you'd love to see at this event, I'd encourage you to spread the word. We've already begun our marketing for that and we hope to have pretty good participation. It does limit to twenty because of logistics and space. So currently, we have a few that have already submitted their application.
What day is that event?
Saturday, September sixteenth. It's the Celebrate Los Allo event on Pine Street.
What are the hours?
So our portion of the event is from five thirty to eight thirty, but the event itself, it starts as early as four. And then we have the five K, ten K run and all of the other carnival aspects throughout the evening. So we'll be happy to provide more information as well as we get closer to that date.
Great.
A few more, staff polos, or in this case, commission polos, if you've not submitted your size to our department secretary Gabby, please do so. And that's, again, city-issued staff polo or commission polos. So please do that tonight if you'd like to, if you haven't already done so. We also have our Sunset Saturday coming up on the second Saturday of the month, so that would be August twelfth, and that's our monthly event that we partner with, a local event planner, and that they set up on Pine Street. They do different types of booths, vendors, beverage garden, a lot of fun activities for the family. So the next one's on Saturday, September, um, Saturday, August twelfth. And then lastly, we also will be transitioning to DocuSign for the approval of minutes. Just FYI, that's what we're gravitating to now, so we'll be doing that moving forward. And that wraps up all the items that I have.
Can I add one?
Yes.
We put a handout on your desk about the different properties that were selected for RENA numbers, and so I wanted to remind Commissioner Zelmer, who asked about it, to bring that up during, what you wanted out of that during-
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner reports, so.
Okay. Thank you. So we will go to commissioner reports. Who would like to start?
Question for the Pine Street thing. Are they gonna have music in the evening too, do you know?
For Celebrate Los Allo?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Yeah. There'll be, there's a live band and that's, so just to clarify, that's put on by our recreation new services team, but it's gonna be a citywide effort, so on behalf of development services, we'll have our economic development division, different staff. There will also be public safety onsite for PD, and so it's gonna be a citywide event.
Yeah, just, it's a citywide event, we, Serve Los Allo, we'll be kicking it off in the morning, right? It won't be on Pine Street, they'll be holding it at where they've held it for the past several years in the community center parking lot. But like Irving said, there is a five K, ten K run, that's also part of that. There's a carnival that's coming, a, a street fair, and of course, the street fair will have bands and entertainment. And then, of course, there's a public safety aspect of it that's put on by our police department, the Pine Streets, that's put on by, by development services. So it's a multi-event, multi-aspect event for that day. So again, it should be lots of fun, but we start off early in the morning with Serve Los Allo, and it goes all the way towards the evening with Pine Streets and the street fair and the carnival.
Great. Anybody else? Commissioner reports?
I guess it was just the thing that was given to me by Tom was the number, the RENA numbers, and this was to clarify the differences between the units for the RENA numbers that we submitted with eight hundred and seventeen versus that email that we got that was circulated throughout the city about have your cake and eat it too, or whatever it was, with the twelve ninety-five number. And this explains very well what the maximum density units are is twelve ninety-five, but what our actual RENA unit numbers are is only eight seventeen. So I asked for some clarity as to show what, to basically refute that email that was circulated around, and he did a very good job doing so, so thank you.
Okay. And I'll just, I, I've been watching the city council meetings as well and kind of getting reeducated and so forth, and there's a couple of things from the city council meetings I've, I've noticed, from my, my, from my viewpoint, is that, you know, Commissioner Gross is a very decorated commissioner individual, citizen of the city, so congratulations on all the awards that we've had. That's, that's outstanding. I can say I sit next to her at the planning commission meetings.
Yeah, so do I.
And the other thing, through our education and so forth regarding the housing element, is that it would be my personal viewpoint that I would, I would recommend, being a planning commissioner, that we override the ALUC denial of our housing element, that we'd, that we potentially consider overriding that. It would be the best, I think it would be the best decision for the city to be able to retain local control of our, of our building and planning department.
That's a noise issue, isn't it?
A noise issue? Yeah.
Yeah, right.
So, that's it. Anybody else?
Thank you for the nice comment.
No, it's great, it was great seeing that. I will adjourn this meeting of the planning commission. Thank you.